All right. Hello, welcome to the January meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Lloyd. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Thank you everyone for being here. Please turn yourself, Williams, either off or to silent. The exits are in the back of the room. And there's no smoking. All right. Public hearing. Sicily?
Sicily.
Sicily. That was close. Richard, area variance eighteen Falcon Drive, SBL eighty-six point four dash three dash thirteen. Applicant is seeking an area variance of twenty-three point three feet for a side yard setback to build a garage. Review status, public hearing opened on twelve twelve. Do we have?
We have a plan. You show them.
Yeah, do we have a, a plan up there? If you can come up, just kind of catch the board up and kind of get me up to speed a little bit, if you don't mind.
I submitted some paperwork last time. Uh, this is also just some things I thought about after the last meeting that we would like to read. I don't know if I have enough copies, because I didn't realize how many people were going to be there.
Okay.
Pick them, don't have to pick them, whatever you want. I'm going to read from the end.
Okay.
Would you like me to go through?
Yeah, just fresh, fresh us up on what we're looking at, what you're looking to do. I'm taking it the green highlighted is the proposed building?
Yeah. So I'm looking at the ability eighteen by thirty-one garage. So I'm seeking, I, I looked at the setback as opposite of what you guys looked at. So you guys saying twenty-five, mine was like eleven point seven, but I, this is my first time doing this, so bear with me. So I understand my property is a zone for agriculture and the standard setback is thirty-five feet.
Oh, sorry. My standard setback is thirty-five feet. And I believe adhering to this setback would be detrimental impact on my property and surroundings. Uh, I feel like the only valuable option for this garage be, uh, that would complement the development and preserve the environment, uh, is the requested setback that I had. To put it in the context, my, my property is two point one seven acres and it includes a one hundred by four hundred conservation easement, uh, along the southern boundary. The house is situated two hundred and fifty feet from the roadway and a hundred and fourteen feet from the southern property line. According to the developer, this placement and the conservation easement were established to comply with town ordinances and the development plans. Uh, building the garage with a current setback would not only make, uh, would not only make it visible from the roadway, but would also disrupt the natural landscape. Specifically, the land, uh, would need to be raised approximately four to five feet, resulting in a hundred and forty tons or one hundred and four cubic yards of material being required to be brought in, would estimate a cost of an additional eight thousand dollars. Additionally, this would change, uh, me moving my footing drains, uh, and further, uh, another cost of four thousand dollars, relocating a buried propane tank, uh, estimated thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, these additional costs would be, uh, would exceed fifteen-five, uh, more into, uh, the garage itself, uh, surpassing the budget I would need, uh, that I, that I have for the garage. Uh, if granted a variance, I would utilize, I could utilize the natural grade of the rock cut on the left side of the property as a foundation for the garage. This area has already been partially transformed into a gravel parking pad with minimal material, allowing for a more environmentally friendly approach. The placement of the garage in this location would enhance the development by providing additional seclusion from neighboring properties. I have also consulted with my neighbor, uh, James Rosa, who's here tonight, who would, uh, directly be infected, uh, affected by this project. He has expressed his support for the garage proposed location, uh, and agreeing that is the most suitable option for both properties. So that was my, uh, my initial, and then, um, we spoke at the last meeting and there was a few concerns that came up and I, that's what this is, I wrote that, so I can go over that as well if you like, sir.
Okay. I just, I, I just have a couple, I'm going to go up to the board for a second.
Yep, sir.
So you have, you have a propane tank somewhere here?
Nope. Uh, it's a buried tank, it's a, that, it's actually.
Okay, that buried tank is your propane tank?
Yep, it's not round, it's a torpedo tank, uh, which runs the same, I'll say the same, uh, width as the house.
What does that say?
It's a footing drain.
Footing drain, okay.
I didn't put them there, the builder put them there.
Yeah.
But they are there.
Yeah, yeah, they're. Pretty easy move. Okay. So yeah, if you want to read, if you want to read your, your narrative, we'll follow along.
Uh, yep, so following last month's meeting, I took the time to review the comments made by the board and the neighbors who spoke during the public hearing. One of the main objections, uh, came from Mr. Depew, who's behind me, or not here today, but behind my property, sorry, uh, and who stated he was not in favor for the project. However, when asked for a justifiable reason, he did not provide one. Mr. Depew's objection stemmed from his personal beliefs that he was treated unfairly by the board in relation to his own denied proposals, his words, not mine. His further, uh, further emphasized that his desire for consistency, consistency in the board's decisions. While I respect Mr. Depew's opinions, I believe his, his comments lack sufficient factual support for, for this particular case. The only argument Mr. Depew put forth regarding not wanting a garage in his front yard is noteworthy, however, I would like to point out, he already has a garage in his front yard. Furthermore, the proposed garage would be situated seventy-five point seven feet from his property line and will largely be screened from his view by a substantial vegetation buffer. Given these circumstances, the impact of his property will be minimal. On the other hand, Mr. Rosa spoke in support for the project, agreeing that granting the variance would enhance the neighborhood's character. Even with Mr. Rosa's approval, I would like to highlight that the proposed garage is sufficiently screened by vegetation between our two properties. Therefore, the approval of this variance will not result in a visual change or any material difference of the garage visibility from Mr. Depew's property. Additionally, the presence of the rock ledge and existing vegetation will ensure the characteristics of the adjoining properties are preserved and the garage will largely be concealed from the roadway. I also want to address the comment made during the public hearing by one of the board members who stated the additional cost of the imposed, uh, by not granting the variance is not his concern. However, I believe in pointing the board, point out, one of the roles of the zoning board of appeals is to interpret zoning laws and provide relief to property owners facing hardships due to unique challenges in today's economic client, climate, uh, the increased cost resulting from having to comply with a thirty-five foot setback in itself is a hardship. The financial burden coupled with the environmental and situational difficulties would significantly impact my ability to develop the property as intended. To further support my case, I reviewed several similar variances in the town of Lloyd, which I believe show precedent for granting variances for garages, sheds, and other outbuildings with substantial modifications. Just bear with me on this, I did this, I was going to do a FOIA request for every, uh, variance you guys did, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to do that to you guys, or to the person that would have to fulfill that FOIA request. So I did the best I could just off the town website. Okay. Uh, six Hillside Place setback variance for garage, May thirteenth, uh, two thousand and one. Sixty-seven South Street variance allowing outbuilding in front of a residence, April eighth to twenty twenty-one. Three Orchard Lane variance allowing garage in front of yard, uh, August tenth, twenty twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-eight Church Street variance for real setback of the shed in May ninth, twenty twenty-four. Five Lisa Drive variance for a setback of a shed in, uh, September twelfth, twenty twenty-four. These examples demonstrate variances, similar structures have been approved. In each case, I, the relief provided was reasonable and did not create any significant impact or negative impact on the neighborhood. From the comments made by the board, I believe the consensus that the location of the proposed garage would not result in undesirable changes to the neighborhood. It was my contention that the financial, environmental, and situational hardships of moving the garage, uh, to the, meet the thirty-five foot setback requirement is, are substantial. Requested relief for twenty-three point three foot is not excessive and is in line with previous variances granted by the board. The proposed building is in its, is an approved use for the zone and does not pose any adverse physical or environmental effects. While it's true that some of the structure obstacles were created by the builder, the substantial grade of the property, uh, necessitating a large amount of fill is not. In conclusion, along with the majority of my neighbors, believe that the positive impacts of granting the variance outweighed a potential negative in consequences to the community. I respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals approve the variance, uh, proposed for the garage.
Okay. Thank you very much for your, for your input. Um, I will tell you that in every case that you've stated, it goes by a set of criteria. Every single one of those is approached the same way that yours will be.
Yeah.
It will be the least amount of, uh, relief and it will have a, the least amount of impact and whether the variance is necessary. So every case you stated, and I remember pretty much all of them, I can't really go verbatim, but I know them pretty, pretty good. There was a reason that the variance was granted and every variance that this board grants is the minimal that we can possibly grant. There are extenuating circumstances for everyone, that's why this board exists. So what we typically do, that's why I asked what the buried tank was, whether that was your tank, where the footing drains are. So you said it was a hundred and four cubic yards of material at eight thousand dollars?
Yep.
That's eighty dollars per cubic yard?
Yep. Delivered. I don't know what the exact math as far as that, but the, that's what was quoted to me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not a, I don't truck material, like, I don't, you know.
No, I, I get it, I get it.
That was quoted, it was quoted to me by the cement guy who would be doing the same foundation, so.
Okay. Um, I, I, I think we'd need to see, um, we need to see that, because he, here's what I'm going to tell you, and this is what we pretty much tell everybody. We need to give you the minimal that we possibly can. So moving that structure further away from the lot line is what we're going to try to do. So I personally, if you're saying that you need a hundred and four cubic yards, I need to know what area is going to get filled, to what elevation, to what extent. So I'm going to go back up to the board.
Yep, and I can kind of point it out to you right now.
So if you're telling me that a hundred and four cubic yards is going to bring you right here and you're going to get whatever this distance is, we can say, okay, a hundred and four, a little high, let's see if we can minimize it. This eleven, seven, and, and fifteen, personally, it's a little close, um, because it's a thirty-five. We have to, like I said, grant the minimal. This can go over here and you wouldn't need a variance at all. Then you'd have to say, okay, so I would have to put a driveway in around my tank, I'd have to do this. We can't just say, well, you did it in this case, you did it in that case, every case is unique. If you can come up with valid reasons why that's the only place it can go, and, and it can be a financial, like you said, it can be a financial hardship, it, there can be, there can be a, a litany of factors. Personally, I would need to see a little more, like I would need a topo, I would need to know a topo map of how much from where the, nope, that's not it. From where it's proposed right now, you said it's on a rock ledge?
So, yeah, there was a, and do you, is the picture still there?
That's what I was trying to.
I'm sorry, thank you. If not, I, I have actual physical photos with me and might help some of this.
Ooh, that's a steep drive.
All right. So on the right-hand side, you see like a little bit of a rock ledge, it's covered by leaves. Do you see where the boat is sitting?
I do.
So the boat is sitting right on the edge of kind of where the garage would go. Uh, to the left of that, it drops down about four to five feet, not too much, but I would want to bring it up to grade because that area of the property, the back right-hand corner does flood a little bit.
Certainly.
So, uh, it's not wetlands or not, kind of this federal or state wetlands by any means, but it does flood. However, that rock ledge, uh, does come down to where that boat and that dump trailer is, uh, and has a thin layer of item four over it.
I don't see a dump trailer, but, okay.
It's right to the right of the, you can't see, it's like a little black thing, that's the dump trailer right there.
Okay.
So, um, that's pre- pretty much where the boat is, is where the garage would go. On top of that, um, like I said, it's hidden behind, behind the rock ledge. What I'm trying to do, I don't, I, I really didn't want the garage to stick out to the entire neighborhood, but, I mean, if that's not a, a factor, I mean, I, I believe it is, but.
It is a mitigating factor. It absolutely is a mitigating factor, and that's why this board exists.
Thank you, yeah.
But we have to, we have to be able to say, we exhausted every possibility to grant you that fifteen feet.
And, and somebody last time did say, well, that they were thinking thirteen feet, so I went out and I, and I checked that to see if that, uh, that would be doable. If I did that, it would kick the garage much closer to my house, uh, which, and I, I don't, the whole.
Forty feet there already. You show on your plans, there's forty feet between the proposed garage and the house. There's forty feet there.
Yes.
So if you take, let's say, ten feet off that, make it thirty feet, you can get any kind of machine through there and you're getting this almost twenty so, we're really looking for twenty-one, twenty-five feet on that corner. That's what we really like to see.
So that's.
That's mediation. And, but that forty feet is, I think it's excessive.
So.
You, you.
Go back to the board. All right. So about right here is where the boat is, you're saying?
Yes, exactly, yep.
So as you progress in this direction? What's the elevation change from right here to right here?
So from the back corner of that thirty-one foot garage, right, yep, right there?
Yep.
Is four and a half feet, utilizing a.
How far off?
What do you mean, how far off?
From, from this corner right here?
About three to four feet.
Three to four feet, so it drops off very severe?
Yes.
Okay, and it holds that grade, it holds that elevation all the way over here?
So the farther you go in the, to the back of side of the property, the farther you go back, the more it grades that way. That whole property is graded towards the rear.
Okay, so your hundred and four yards, what limit does that fill?
That fills pretty much from the, if I were to do thirty-five feet off that property line.
From here?
Yep, so if you do thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet off, yep, right here.
And it goes back and it adds on top of that thirty-one feet back, it would add about three feet behind that because the, I, I'm sorry.
Right?
Yes.
Right. So you would fill this area right here?
Essentially.
And that would get you to where you do not need a variance?
Correct.
Okay. So just real quick, if we can get this number to twenty-five, you obviously would not need as much fill because you'd save, as you say, it gets deeper, your topo goes down, the further this way you go. So that number, if you move it this way, would reduce.
I wouldn't need a hundred and four, but it'd be pretty close.
Right, you, you'd still need, you'd still.
Just need a substantial amount.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
The, the exact amount, I, I couldn't tell you without calling Mr. Benjamin back to, to provide.
No, I, I completely understand.
Another estimate.
But I would feel much more comfortable with a twenty-five foot than a fifteen or an eleven. So.
I don't mind the footing drain side of it, like I, I understand what you guys are saying. I, I have a feeling I might have to rip up part of the driveway, which is another additional cost. I don't know if they put a Y in there, I don't know what they did. And, and I understand that's not the, the board's problem.
For the, what you mean, for the footing drain?
Yeah, if I take it up, I haven't even, so, because the footing drain is only about four feet off that back corner of that.
Yeah, it, can I make a recommendation? If you're going to do that rather than rip your driveway up?
Yep.
Put a J box in? And reroute it?
Right.
So just put a J box in, grab it, change it, and change the direction coming back the other way. It's a hell of a lot cheaper than ripping your driveway up.
Obviously, I don't want it underneath the garage itself, right? That's, that's no bueno.
Yeah.
Hell, you know, but again, I, I, I'm trying to just mitigate the cost as much as possible. I know that's not the main concern.
And that's where, that's where the balance is going to be, your cost and our relief.
Yep.
And, and we understand, and, and we have to ask the question. So like I said, if you move this here, you don't need a variance at all, but you have to explain to the board why that's not feasible.
So again.
What you're saying, you have to fill in more, you have to come off your driveway, you have to move the tank.
And, and.
There's reasons for that, and, and you have to.
And, and the main purpose of this, right, and I, is, is to, to store my boat, is to store my, my skid steer, is to store things like that, right? And by, I wouldn't, wouldn't be able to swing that turn with the way the driveway is, backing it up the driveway. So this is providing a straight run, and I don't know if that can be considered, but that's one of the main, other main reasons why I'm trying to do this, right? That's the whole purpose of this garage. What's that, sir?
No, I'm just whispering.
Speaking out loud?
Yeah, he's.
I got you.
I'm just, I'm just throwing darts here.
He's, he's.
No.
He's saying that I should clear up my yard because it'd make it easier for him to dump green, so. So a, all of those, like I said, are going to, are going to be mitigating factors. So if we can, if we can reduce the amount of fill, um, and I'm, I'm thinking, and again, I, I don't know who the contractor is, it doesn't really matter, um, eighty dollars a cubic yard, and I'm assuming you're going to do the work yourself with the skid steer, or, or that includes, uh.
That includes, because I'm not going to, I wouldn't, I am not proficient enough in this skid steer to do a grade for a cement slab, it's going to be all him.
Okay. So if we can, if we can get that cost down and maximize the offset from the property line to minimize the variance, I would be much more comfortable with that.
I, I had once, uh, like I said, I, I had Mr. Depew behind me, which I respect, uh, speak against the project, um, I, I, I spoke to why, you know, I, I don't think he provided any factual support. I brought my other two neighbors that also received the letters with me tonight, um, they're behind us, and they're, they're also for the.
Yeah, no, we're going to, as soon as we're done with you, we'll open up the public hearing and they can come up and.
No, I'm just bringing that out. You know, and the other thing is just that you, you wouldn't see it from the roadway itself due to the rock ledge, because it'd kind of be tucked behind the road, just like my boat is in that picture there.
Okay.
Um, and, and it's a nice neighborhood, I, I do like the aesthetics of it kind of being hidden, you know, I, I, I think it's, that's important.
Okay.
So it's, that's my personal opinion, and that's pretty much my argument for today.
Okay. Um, something that, that other applicants have done, and I believe one of the ones on your list had done this, um, for aesthetics, what you may want to do is get flagging. Put a couple of pink flags where the corners of that proposed is, and a couple of blue flags, green flags, pick a different color.
Yep.
To where, let's use twenty-five feet, that's not official, but let you use twenty-five feet off the property line?
Okay.
Take a picture from the road or the entrance to your driveway, so we can see, okay, if we put the garage here, it's hidden by the rock. And the other thing is, it's good to do it at a elevation. Like, one of the ones you had mentioned was, I believe it was South Street, um, let me see here, sixty-seven South Street, Airing Salon Outbuilding in front of a Residence, we had them put a flag up and take pictures from all directions, um, which, they were a very unique situation. So it, it's, it's not something we haven't done in the past, but it helps you, because if the, if the board can say, can justify saying, okay, putting it over here, it's going to be in direct line of sight, um, putting a couple bushes isn't going to do the trick by hiding it, but if we put it over here, yeah, it'll be closer to the property line, but it'll be completely hidden. It's a mitigating factor. So if you can provide that. Um, well, yeah, and I think you said your builder, if you hold twenty-five feet, he can shoot some elevations and, uh, because you said at thirty-five feet, it's a hundred and four cubic yards?
Hundred, yeah, hundred and four, at thirty-five feet.
At thirty-five, so.
If, if I were to, if I were just to adhere to the strict setbacks of the, of the town.
Exactly. So i- if we use twenty-five and have him give you an estimate of how many cubic yards? Again, and I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking for my, for myself, I believe I'd be comfortable with twenty-five feet from everything that I see here. So if we can use that as a guiding factor, I, I think it would be, it's an easier get.
I think it's still, uh, my personal opinion, just thinking about it, it's, it's still going to be a substantial amount of fill that needs to be brought in. And I know, yeah, I, I totally understand what you're saying, you're, you're trying to mitigate it and you're trying to resolve this by the least amount of impact on the variance or on the town ordinance itself.
We are, because I would hate, I would hate for another applicant to come in and put your name down here?
Just like I did.
And say, well, there you go, you didn't make that guy do anything. It's not what we're here to do. We got, we have to minimize, and it, and it's part of what we're supposed to do.
At, at twenty-five feet, I, I have a feeling it's still going to come back, and, and again, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's going to come back six, you know, it's going to come back to excessive amount.
So throw, throw that on a topo map. When he's there, I'm assuming he's going to shoot the grade, just shoot an elevation and give us a bench. At the edge of your driveway, call it zero, call it ten, call it whatever you want, and then say, okay, at twenty-five feet, it's negative four. At thirty-five feet, it's negative six. That's the elevation change from your bench to whatever it is. So we can, we can do the math pretty quickly to figure out the cubic yardage that you would need.
How do I say this? If I'm going to keep calling him back and have him do more and more work and I'm not going to be able to make this project work, you know what I mean, that it's, I'm throwing away money, essentially.
Okay.
You know, and I'm not making money, sir, I'm not.
Absolutely, none of us are.
My, my wife and I are hard workers and I'm, I'm going to throw it out, you know what I mean?
Uh, uh, you want to do it the cheapest way?
Yep.
It's going to cost you three bucks.
Okay, got it.
No, it's going to cost you six, because you got to buy a roll of twine. Go to Lowe's.
Yep, and do the elevation that way, easy enough, I know exactly how you're saying to do it.
Get a line level and a roll of string.
Okay.
Point where it is on a, on a map?
Yep.
Where you took it from?
Yep.
Give us elevation changes?
Got you.
Be the cheapest way you could go, and then, and then you can come back with rock solid numbers saying, okay, this is what it's going to be. Does anyone on the board have any questions, comments, concerns? Yes?
Just, just a question for the applicant. Do you have a set of plans for this yet? Do you have an idea how you're going to build it?
Yes, I submitted them with the, uh, the.
Well, you do have them.
Yeah, with the, with the, I submitted them with the original building permit.
Is it foundation on there, or is it?
Yes, the foundation.
Monolithic?
Okay. Monolithic, or I think I, I believe I spoke to you about it.
Probably.
Yes.
I've talked to a lot of people.
I know, same here.
All right, so tomorrow, take a look.
And, yeah, and if, and if we can have that for elevation, because I'm sure you have elevations of the walls and the, and the roof line. Yeah, so when, when you do that, it's a little harder to do with a, with a string line, but if you go, if you don't want to have him come back, I understand why you would do that, you can get a fixed point and use that same benchmark and pull an elevation height and go off of the top of rock, so we can get an elevation change from the rock to the driveway. so we can get an elevation change from the rock to the driveway. And I gotta tell you, is it prudent if I go out there and do that for this, for this guy? I'll tell you what.
Coffee you wanna come on?
It would, it would literally take me ten minutes to do this for you. Yeah, get, give him my cell phone number or you can, I don't wanna give it in a public hearing, but I, I'll come. Yeah, text me. Don't call me, text me, cause I'm never gonna hear you. I'll help you out with it, with, with the yardage and stuff, cause it seems like you, you wanna do the right thing and we wanna do the right thing by you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for the applicant? Anything else you guys think you need him to do for his next trip back here?
Don't say that. All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
This time I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Bill?
Have a second? Paul, all in favor? Aye. Is there any member of the public that wish to be heard? Or on, do we have anybody on? On Zoom?
So I, I kinda, I went over, um, last, I apologize, I couldn't have been here last month, but I went over it. But if you guys wanna come up and just give me, or give the board, refresh our memories, it, it couldn't hurt.
All right, not a problem. So I did speak last week. My name's James Rosa. I'm at fourteen, so on the map, I'm the one, if it's north, going north. True north, I'm the one.
You're the closest.
I'm the only one that's affected by.
You're the closest property.
Thirty-five foot. So Rich and I had a in-depth conversation like someone applying for a zoning board variance would. Uh, he asked me what he, what I thought about putting a shed on his property. And my line is a little bit, it, our line is weird by the way the builders set it up. They put his driveway without, obviously, essentially, when they built it, right on the line. And then they gave me all this extra space on that bottom, so I have plenty of room over there. So when he came to me and said, hey, I'm looking to put it here, um, when you're standing at the road, we gotta have fifteen plus feet of elevation to go up. You saw how steep that driveway and it is. And he's taking that picture from like where the three is. If you go down to like Falcon Drive, it's probably a never, another seven or eight feet. You can't even see his boat right now from the road pretty much.
So you're saying this comes up and goes back down?
Bear, no, it doesn't go back down at all. It just keeps going up and then it plateaus and it's flat at the top.
Oh, don't tell me that, cause you told me he's gotta fill in.
No, 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 no. No, it's flat up there. The driveway goes up. So what I'm getting at is where this, where the, um, garage is right now, if you continue to go to the road, it's almost gonna be invisible. If you move it out anywhere to the left, there's a nat- that natural rock cut that's there, you're, you're gonna start to show the front left corner of the garage. And as you move it left towards the house, you're gonna start to see more and more and more of the garage door. You know, the whole garage door. So right now, from the road pretty much, you're not gonna see anything except for potentially, whatever little bit is above the garage. The more you move it, you're gonna see more and more of the building. So when he came to me, he said, you know, I'm looking at, I gotta get a variance because unfortunately, there's a thirty-five foot setback. What's your thought on this? Yeah, the zone. And I said, I don't care, put it on the property line. It's not gonna affect, you know, you know, it, it doesn't affect anything that I have going on over there. We have a little bit of a natural buffer that's enough that we would need. But regardless, if he puts it there or over there, there's two, there's big things from the road. Like we can see it versus not seeing it, which is something that everybody likes, not necessarily having all of their stuff out visible to the road. And it doesn't affect anything that I have going on there. As you know, I've been here a lot in the past for months on end, and that was a totally different scenario. That was, you know, massive changes of grades in a house and so.
When it comes to application to application.
Yeah.
When I say we have short memories, we have no memories.
Okay.
We treat everyone, we treat everyone.
So I don't wanna think that there's a favoritism. This is just, we had a legit conversation and that does not affect my property. If it was two feet, I've been here plenty to hear you argue, well, how are you gonna get around to paint it? That's actually a pretty good idea. Eleven feet? I mean, you could pretty much drive a truck down the side of that.
We absolutely understand.
I don't think the argument of if it's from three and you were telling him to move it to eleven, well, you probably have a really good argument, because if we sell thirty years from now and some sour person moves in there, they don't want him on their property to paint the, the fence or to paint the side of the house, because he only has two feet. But eleven point seven feet is, let's call it even ten, is plenty to do scaffolding and painting.
Sure.
And whatever you want.
And to play devil's advocate, we need to justify why it's eleven and not thirty-five.
Correct, and I understand that.
And that's what we're here for.
Plenty of reasons, you know, on top of that I'm the only person in this situation that's affected by the positioning of that building for the closeness. The more you move it, the more neighbors now will, other neighbors will see the building and then I guess there would be a visual appearance. But there's no, there's not gonna be a change to my property because of that. And it doesn't affect, you know, me and my wife do not have an issue with that being eleven, because regardless if it's eleven or thirty-five, we still see it. Now, if it's thirty-five, it's gonna cost him an arm and a leg, because you're literally moving the entire footprint, a whole nother footprint over, as opposed to just a little bit down. So while I understand that you want something from him to mitigate the least amount of setback.
That's what we have to do.
Right.
It's not a, that's not a, like, hey, that's a cool thing.
And I get that. I understand what you're trying to say, but.
You're missing the point here.
No, I'm not missing the point. I totally understand what you're saying.
There's one article in our decision, it says, without giving him relief, can he put the building anywhere else on the property? Without giving no relief at all, can he put the building legally on his property without any problems? The answer is yes.
Correct. Well, it's always gonna, there's always some version of one of those that's a check mark to yes. Most people apply for relief for some version of a financial hardship, for viewing it, for.
That's why we're here.
Not impacting the environment and that's why we're here, obviously.
That's why we're here. We'd be out of a job.
But if the only thing in this situation is, the only situation here that's being affected is essentially, it's gonna cost more to move the entire footprint, but it doesn't affect the environment because it, he's not bringing anything in.
We're not arguing with you. We're not arguing with you at all.
I just want you to understand my point that I am the only neighbor in this situation here that is affected by the location of that variance.
That, you're absolutely correct.
And I have zero issues with that. We had a conversation and if we had a problem, him and I would have had a conversation and I'm sure we would have worked it out.
But.
But there is no.
But I, but I will tell you, you are the only neighbor in this situation that will be affected by this. But if we don't do our deal, due diligence, every single person in this town, every property owner will be affected by it.
Foot seven inches.
Because then you just take the zoning code and go, there's a reason why the thirty-five foot setback is there. That's why we do this.
And I understand. I just want, your due diligence is this meeting and this process.
That's correct.
Zero problem. Don't think there's an issue. I just wanna make sure you're aware that I, we have zero problem with it. I don't wanna have to come back and keep beating up these meetings and you have to listen that I don't have a problem with it.
No, 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 we like seeing you.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. But I'll leave you with that, that yes, I, we had an in-depth conversation and I think where it's at is the most feasible, looking at the terrain. It doesn't require him to move anything in. And I don't have a problem with it.
All right, very good.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does any other member of the public wish to be heard at this time? Nobody's on the, on the Zoom? All right, so we're going, as we always do, we're going to leave the public hearing open, just in case the next time we meet, another member of the public wishes to be heard. You can grab my cell phone number from Sarah. Give me a shout, we'll go out, take some topos and, uh, we'll see you in a month.
Thank you, sir.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. No, I just leave it open. All right, old business, Long Steven. Miriam, area variance fifteen Lockhart Lane, SBL eighty-eight point thirteen dash eight dash seven. Applicant is seeking an area variance of seven foot, seven feet to install a thirteen foot tall fence. That is a tall fence.
It's a perfect fence.
So I read the minutes of last month's meeting. Um, I'd spoken to the other board members, you know, briefly of, of what you guys are dealing with. Thirteen foot fence is never gonna fly.
No, but we have to have something.
Right. Rust had, you know, spitballed a few things. I don't know the cost. Uh, I know, trying to think of where it was. And we can't tell you what to do, but arborvities, relatively cheap, grow real fast, and you can put them in at ten feet tall.
Yeah.
We still need to have. We still need to have something that. You know, even if you give us a variance of seven feet, you were talking about the netting on the last month.
What can we do with the netting?
Do a black netting, it would be temporary. It's not a permanent fixture.
I don't think you can do that. That would still be a fence.
Not permanent.
It's not permanent. It's temporary.
How would the, how would the zoning board feel about that? We're the zoning board. He's the, you're the building. So if someone put up, if someone put up a fence and then raised it with a netting, be it temporary or permanent.
It still becomes a fence.
It's still, it's still a fence.
No, it's, it's, you have the fence and then you put the netting on top.
It's.
It's still.
Still a fence.
It's not permanent. It's temporary. We have to have something. Within this month, we've already had issues again with our dogs.
It is what it is.
Have to do, we're trying to, you have to work with us.
Just looking at it. She could chase me down with a truck.
So.
I was on foot.
We're trying to just put a barrier.
He was here five years ago. He's seen the tarps down the property. He's seen, it was bad. She, they gave him a false survey and everything to steal the property. We just trying to get some kind of relief from these people. I am, there is, we need a barrier.
And that's what we're saying.
Seven feet really isn't gonna give it.
It's not in the front. It's between us.
This is not. This is not normal here. We are, you know.
And that's why we're here. We're, we're trying to do the right thing.
No, I, I.
But we need.
I feel for you.
The only thing that stopped the police coming is the restraining order. And they're gonna be coming back soon, cause she's not able to control herself. It's, it is rolling. I mean, what do you, you know, I know you guys have this small amount of power here, but you need to let us have a barrier of something.
Something. I mean, just a netting.
Putting it up soon anyway, and we're not gonna care what you're gonna do. You're gonna have to come after us. I'm telling you.
It won't be me coming after you.
What are you gonna do?
That's their department.
That's what we're being, we're being bullied.
Harassed right now. So we're trying to get, you're not.
We're trying to stop it.
Just give us a seven feet, send us free. And we'll do what we have to do. Um, because you're not.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
Just gonna end our, as long as you could do is seven feet, tell us seven feet, that's it.
So, I'm, I'm trying to remember. I know we've, on a commercial, we've done eight. I don't know if we've done a seven foot. Anthony, can you remember? I know we did it.
What's commercials, height of fence on a commercial?
The last one we did. The last one that we proposed was for, uh, Z- Zamiello?
Yes.
That was commercial.
Didn't do it though.
Didn't do it, but that was what you, that's what was.
Well, no, I'm, I'm thinking a little further back than that. I'm thinking the nursing home. I'm going back probably twenty years.
Valley Vista?
Yeah, remember they did the fence?
No, we had to make, turn it, they wanted to turn it around.
Turn it around.
They wanted the wrong way. No, that's only a six foot fence. It's a wooden fence, six foot.
Yeah, I thought they wanted eight and we only gave them six.
It was just that the posts were on the wrong side and the neighbor said that he wanted the rough side facing him.
Right.
So we, we granted it.
So I can't. So he, here's my question to you. If, if we were to say six feet, would the extra seven, like with the.
She's six feet tall.
She's six feet, she can be over that. Give us the eight feet.
She's six feet.
On their side, they have a, they have a high of dirt.
They raised it. They, they had a fence, they, they, they raised, they raised that side with dirt. I mean, we.
We're gonna raise our property now, so now what?
You could see, they raised that side, so they're actually higher.
And you could see it right there.
So we're a little lower now on that side where our fence is, and she's six feet tall.
Now what, nine feet? You gotta give us, I don't think, we're just asking.
Well, that's why I'm asking for, like the.
Let's go by tall for the arborvitie and just put it all the way down.
That's right.
Just put it right down.
We were doing that. You stopped us.
Yeah, we had a stop work order, so we stopped.
No, but.
That was for a fence, not a.
For the fence.
You put a six foot fence up, protect your, out of vitie, your, your trees. And right next to the, next to the fence, you just go right down there with twelve footers.
Put a, you put a vegetative barrier.
In two years, you never see her whole problem.
We don't have two years. This has been five years of, this is, you're not catching the picture.
It's gonna block it.
You have to block her.
She can't, she can't see us.
Just seeing her, yeah.
Yeah, it's the visual, yeah.
She can't.
And she, I mean, even, you know.
She's a little slow.
One at a time, guys, you're confusing.
It blocks her. She can't see us. She can see me when I get off the porch, which I had another argument with her the other day when she was looking at me. But once I go down the stairs, she can't see me.
We had a thirty foot tarp, a hundred and fifty feet. He saw it, straight down the property line. Thirty feet.
And it went through the front part too. And then we, then we went, I went to the police station, told me to put cameras up.
Oh, no, no, she came around a little bit, but she's gonna get too much. It's just that she has a dog, she's, it's a slow, she's slow. We're having, it's, it's never gonna end with a six foot fence. And now, you know, six foot, now she's standing on her foot over on her other property, so now it's, it's just one big game. And we're getting, you know, what do you either.
But it is nice you have that privacy fence there, like right, we have that right there and it's like, ah, she's not there looking at.
She had a real big problem.
You're just blocking it. You're, you're blocking it.
This is five years.
So.
This is twenty-five times with the police, twenty-five times.
So.
A restraining, arrest and restraining order.
I, I feel for you, but, and again, this is just me. I'm not speaking for the entire board.
I feel.
I, there's no way you're getting a thirteen foot fence.
No, thirteen, but we want eight.
But what I'm saying is.
Something. Cause six foot is not gonna do it. She's gonna be right up over it. She's already up over it with the foot.
What's our limit for residential? Five?
Six.
Six is our, is our limit for residential.
And she's six feet tall.
That's, that's without a permit.
That, that's right. That's without a variance.
And that's why I requested a variance.
We're not getting thirteen, but we like eight. She stole the, uh, for twenty years.
But what, but then.
Stole our property.
Then they had, they had.
They illegally stole our property.
It started when they had their fence put on our property.
Where, where did, where did this division occur?
When they put the fence on our property without a survey.
Fence on property.
So, we, we told them they had to move it.
Told them not to do it, did it anyway, and then they had to move it and.
And then ever since then, she goes right up to that fence and.
So, what, yeah, and it took a year. It's dead on my property for a year. And they just poked it all in back.
We have a year before we have to move it.
And filmed it for a year, like this, for a year.
It was bad.
First time I filmed her, she called the police. The twenty-five times the police, twenty, we don't, we don't wanna just have to move. I have my mother in the house. We just fixed the house up. What do you, you know, let us have some buffer here.
We're trying to get some relief, you know?
Just telling you right now.
To quote Rodney King, can't we all just get along?
It ain't gonna happen.
So I think, I think.
What are, well, we tried to bounce down from her. It got worse.
But we tried to ignore it.
This is five years of just.
So what, what we're gonna have to do is, you're gonna have to, the application is thirteen feet, right? They have an application in front of us for thirteen feet. So you're gonna have to amend the application to say eight feet.
Yes, sir.
And then,
And then, we can set a public hearing, your neighbor, I'm sure, is gonna show up.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, we'll put an eight foot fence between them.
She's not the owner, though, that's just the problem, she's not the owner.
Okay.
It's a shame that people have to be that way, I mean, this world, the way it is right now.
It, no, it's horrible.
It's a broken wall.
It's, no, it's horrible, her husband's dying, she should, she should be focusing on that, that, that's how, that's why in the beginning, we kinda just let it slot, we, we're quiet about it.
Yeah, he's pretty dead, very soon.
That's a little out of our purview.
She got arrested, taking my phone out of my hand on my property, so we just trying to put a buffer, it's not, and we don't wanna, we're, we're trying to, if my mother wasn't in the house, we would die, we'd, we'd almost cut the house in two right now, be renting it, I can go to KJ and have the bid sold tomorrow. And I have another building, right here in the village, they want that bad.
Hold on, hold on.
I have a question, um, is, is she the owner of the property? So she's not, so she's renting the property?
No. No.
No, she's married to her husband, her husband's dying.
Who owns the property?
He does.
In stereo.
He does.
Okay, so she owned, yeah, she owns the property, if they're married.
Yeah.
She owns the property.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so, so let's do this, um. I'd like to set a public hearing for next month on the amended applica- the amended eight foot application. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
I have a second. Okay, all in favor of opening a public hearing on an eight foot fence for next meeting? Can I get an aye? Aye.
Aye, say aye.
Anyone opposed to a public hearing? Okay, so, next month, we're gonna have a public hearing, so we need to amend your application to say eight feet.
Yes, sir.
We need a site map, and I don't know if we have this ready, I apologize, I was not here last month, we'll need a map, we'll need.
We have a survey.
A, a survey map, show us where the fence is gonna be, show some topo, because you guys brought up that this side is higher than this side, so that's gonna come into account, whether the eight feet's from here, from here, as much information as you can, you can provide us, the faster the process goes.
Thank you.
Give us, uh, I don't know if there's, there's a delineation of the property line now, but if there's not, throw a couple of flags up, so you can take a picture from the road, so you can take a picture from your house, okay, this is the property line, this is where we want the fence. If you can, put a stake, go up eight feet, put a flag at eight feet, put a flag at six feet, say, okay, green flag is at six, the red flag is at eight, this is how much is aesthetically gonna change the visual impact from the neighbor, from the road. Give us as much information as you possibly can about the fence, not about the neighbor, about the fence, so we can speed the process along.
Thank you.
All right?
And what neighbors might be opposed to?
Well, that, that'll come, when we do the public hearing, that young lady right there, we'll send it to all the neighbors and.
And John, just.
Pack house.
Just doing a quick search, of course, my phone's not supposed to be on, but eight foot high fences are common for Home Depot, Lowe's, too, right?
Right.
But.
And I, and again, I apologize, I didn't study our code, but we have a provision in our code for an eight foot fence, um, for a commercial application, did we not?
I'd have to look in the zoning code.
I think it's the buffer zones, if I remember, like, if you're next to a commercial residential.
Yeah, there, there's something that I didn't, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't study the, that part of the code today, but I will, before the next meeting, um, be- because something like that, it actually kinda helps us, because it, it gives the vision for a fence, whoever put that stipulation in, or our comp plan, kinda directs us a little bit of, of granting or denying a variance. All right, does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns for the applicant that they wanna see from them, other than what I've noted for next month?
I do. Because I wanna make my job easier.
Yes, let, yes, so.
Just, however it turns out, I, I think that the stipulation should be eight foot max, that's it, no flags, no frilly things, anything on the top, because I'm gonna get the complaints, and then I have to go back and do the.
Right, and, and that's, that's why, that's why I said before, temporary, not temporary, whatever, that's it, if you put, if you put netting above it, they gotta come out, because it's, it's a fence. But you can put the six foot fence, and then you can do a vegetative barrier, just like, uh, along the cemetery on, on two ninety-nine, between the cemetery and a hotel. Did the fence, vegetative barrier evergreen, if you stand at the cemetery, you stand at the hotel, you can't see, and I think that's what you guys are looking for, I don't think you have the time to do evergreens, but you do have the time to do arborvities, they, they plant them at ten, twelve feet, they grow quick, do a staggered.
All year?
Yeah, oh, they're green all year, bright green, beautiful trees.
All year.
Yeah, and they're, they're relatively dense, and if you do, instead of a, instead of a straight line, you do a stagger, so you can, like, one is here, one is here, becomes very dense, yeah, so, that, I'm not telling you what to do, but, little neighborly advice.
Landscaping also, upright, upright, they grow fairly fast, and it'll, it'll spread out at the end.
I just don't wanna have another long summer, you know, once the weather gets warm, we're, we're gonna be in our yards, and I just don't wanna have what we had last year.
Yeah, it's, it's over, it's done, we're, we're done.
Well, we have property up on Van Wagner Road, and, uh, the road's right next to the house, put the hedge in, stop the noise, people walk, the dogs, they're not in your backyard, it's, it, a vegetarian fence, done right, is better than a other kind, cuz the other one, it needs maintenance.
Don't call it a fence.
It's not a fence, it's, it's agriculture.
They're just trees.
Trees.
All right, thank you very much, we'll see you next month. All right, so, minutes to approve, you guys will have to go this without me, because I wasn't here, I did read them, and I wasn't here, so I can't comment, but, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the December twelfth, ZB A.
Corey moves.
All right, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wasn't here, so I couldn't, all opposed? Very good, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, yeah.
See you in February.